It is 5:45, so I'm going to begin our meeting. Sorry, don't take that personal. It is June 23, 2020. I'm going to begin with our pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please rise.
A pledge of allegiance?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We have with us today, we have Reverend Golden, Vice Chair Kennedy, myself, and Mr. Minor. And Dr. Hopes was with us via Teams. Dr. Hopes, can you hear us? I want to make sure that we can hear you. I'm glad you can hear us, but we can't hear you.
Can't hear me.
Oh, now we can. Wonderful. Now we can hear you. I just want to make sure we can all hear each other. We are making this work in the age of COVID-19. Okay, so I'm going to move forward with the approval of the agenda. The chair has found good cause to amend the agenda to include all items listed under Agenda amendments on the June 23, 2020 Agenda, updated June 22, 2020, and posted to the district website, manatee schools.net.
So move by Minor.
Got a motion.
Second.
And a second. Got a motion and a second. Will you hit your second button?
Oh, I'm sorry. My computer is not on.
I want to amend the agenda. I just want to remove something from consent.
Okay.
Which is item, sorry, I don't have a paper copy of the agenda, but the item on the contract for substitute teachers.
So that is item number four.
I'd like to remove that from consent, so we can, I had a few constituents, or I had a couple constituents reach out today with questions, and I just wanted to have the superintendent answer those questions on that item.
Okay. So I don't think that necessarily needs a motion, since it's just pulling something from the consent. I think we've had the conversation before that that's just a courtesy that should be done.
Oh, great, okay.
So I don't think that needs to be a motion, but we can absolutely move that to new business items pulled from consent, so that it can be a discussion item.
Thank you.
So we will, is there any other discussion on the agenda? Okay, great. So we will move forward with as amended, to pull that one item. And if there's no other discussion, then we will vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Let's move forward. The next item is reports and presentations. Mr. Minor.
Okay, I'm going to try to be succinct to cover two meetings. The one, the first one I'm going to cover is Mr. Moskowitz, who is the state coordinator and coordinator concerning all this COVID. And the thing that struck out, stuck out for me was he said that they were going to authorize and pay for separate hurricane shelters for those who have tested positive regarding the virus. And I hadn't heard that before, nor have I seen writings of it, but it makes sense. And I'm looking forward for some statement in writing from the state saying that they would pay for that. I know this came up earlier in discussions, how do we handle that? And according to what we were told, the state's going to pay for that. If it put into a separate hotel or something like that, they will pay for it. Okay, that's meeting number one highlighted. Number two concerns the election of the state officers for the Florida School Board Association. Before the vote, the immediate past president of the Florida School Board Association was from Sarasota. And so at the meeting, who was elected to be the next president of the Florida School Board Association had to be from Sarasota, and that is what occurred. So we got a lot of influence down south. They respect us, and they work with us very closely. So I'm going to conclude my report with that, so we can move on.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
That was Jane Goodwin, who's been elected president of the Florida School Board Association for the coming year.
Absolutely.
Okay. Well, can I amend that, too? We had a speaker at the last meeting, and he was from Manatee County. And he spoke very well and eloquently, asking the Florida School Board Association to consider that our government classes in high school incorporate the registration of students to vote. And I thought it was, I think that was Mr. Golden, James Golden, who brought up a very important topic, and I thank him for that. And I think everybody in the FSBA appreciated his, being part of the FSBA himself. As a member, this was a membership meeting. He exercised the prerogative of bringing up something very important. And thank you, Reverend Golden.
May I respond, Madam Chair?
Sure.
I want to thank you for bringing that up. I don't feel very comfortable with a mouthful of cookies, but I'm going to go forward anyway. And I'm going to say that on Monday, I will be meeting with Mrs. Goodwin, the executive director of the Florida School Board Association, about an initiative to make this a statewide issue. I would certainly love to be able to go to that meeting on Monday, after having lost the 3-2 vote at the last meeting, hoping that maybe someone might, who's on the prevailing side, might bring that back up before us, and that we would become the first school district to resolve that that is something that should be done in the best interests of all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward with the approval of the minutes. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do. I recommend the approval of the minutes from June 9, 2020 workshop, June 9, 2020 regular meeting, and June 11, 2020 workshop.
So move to approved by Minor.
Do I have a second?
Second by Reverend Golden.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Yes, Vice Chair Kennedy.
Yeah, I just, this is for, I had a request to, I would just like to add to the minutes for June 9, 5:45 PM regular meeting. And what I wanted to add, just in my section, under board comments, I actually wanted to include the text of the, I don't want to call it an internet meme, and I think, Michelle, I think you wrote in the, I think you wrote in the minutes, you referred to it as a newspaper article. It actually wasn't an article, that's no big deal. I'm not even sure how to classify it myself, but all I wanted to add to the minutes under my own board comments for that meeting was actually the text of what I read. And I've got them ready for Michelle to go now, so that was all. I just wanted to add that to my section on the last page.
Can you give me a page number to what you're referring to?
Oh, page number. Well, let me see. If you go to the minutes for June 9, 2020, I'm not sure why I'm not getting a, I'm not sure why it's not coming up on my screen. Let me go to the website. Give me one second, please. You may find it before I do.
It's just in your general board comments. That's where you'd like to add that.
Correct, correct. Yeah, the comments at the end of the meeting, the very last agenda item.
Yeah, I guess I don't see anywhere where there's any mention of board comments in that minutes, sorry.
It might be because the minutes of June 9, number two, for the 5:45 PM, are actually the minutes for the June 11, 2020 board workshop at 10 AM.
I think it's just all one document.
Is that what it is?
I think if you scroll down enough, you can find all of it.
Oh, I see. Probably because they have all three of them here, and that's the second one, that's June 11.
This panel is not showing up on my screen for some reason.
Madam Chair, I don't have an objection to that being added to the minute, so.
Okay, it's what he directly read. Is everyone comfortable with adding the wording that he directly read from?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay, does that need to be a motion, or can we just say that we've amended that?
You can do it as amended.
As amended. Okay, so. As amended, we will add specific wording.
Without objection.
With that, yeah, it doesn't seem like there is. The specific wording that Vice Chair Kennedy read into the record. Does that fulfill what you were wishing?
It does, thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'm going to just call for a vote. It's going to be approval of the minutes as amended to reflect the exact wording that Vice Chair Kennedy read on June 9 at 5:45 PM. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Let's move forward. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the approval of the consent agenda for June 23, 2020.
Minor moves to approve. Second.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Consent, there is no discussion, so we are going to vote. I would ask that everybody please use their buttons to hit for the mover and the seconder. Need Mr. Minor to.
Have a technical problem over there.
Okay, we'll do a voice vote.
Okay.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Only my mover button is showing up.
Right, because he didn't hit it. That's okay. We got it. We voice voted. We're fine.
I'm Minor, yes, okay.
Okay, we're going to move forward to discussion items pulled from consent. And the item that Vice Chair Kennedy pulled from consent was item number four, which was substitute teaching employment services. Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
Yes, I do have a recommendation. I do recommend that we move this item forward. I do recommend the approval of the item. I know that Mr. Kennedy did have some questions. Mr. Wagner did all the research on this item, so he will certainly be available if there's any discussion regarding it as well.
Okay, so to be clear, the item number is 21-0046-RG, substitute teaching employment services, not to exceed $2.5 million. Is there a motion?
To approve that?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second. Will you use your button, Mr. Minor?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
And Vice Chair Kennedy?
Thank you. Mr. Wagner, I basically am just going to pass on to you the questions I received today from two constituents who are also substitutes in our district. And I assured them that I did not know the answer to their questions, but I would bring them up tonight. And so I appreciate the board allowing us to talk about this, to take it off. So essentially, Doug, if you could, could you talk about, just basic background? The superintendent already answered this question for me upstairs, but there's about four other districts in the state right now that are kind of moving to this model. And kind of just what precipitated the need for it? And then I guess we'll start with that, and I just have a couple nuts and bolts questions.
Okay, very good. Yep, so this is something we have talked about for a few years here in Manatee County. We have a, and there's other companies that do this as well, but we have talked about the need of having somebody who focuses 100% on filling our subs, sub right here in Manatee County. And so we came across this district, well, a few districts, Columbia County has it, Duval County, Putnam County. And so this company has worked with them. And what we're seeing with a company like this is that they have a, they do all the recruitment. They work to ensure that your subs are filled. They do the training of the subs. They do the working with them to help recruit other substitute teachers. They take that off of our plate. They have their own software that goes with the program, so that they can help to recruit, train, cultivate subs. When you look at the fill rate of other districts, Columbia County, for instance, is like at a 98%. Putnam County is at a 94%. And so when their full focus is to cultivate substitute teachers, they're seeing a higher fill rate than other districts can provide themselves. One of our challenges we have in Manatee County is many times our Title I schools have a lower fill rate than maybe a non-Title I school. And so this is something that they would focus on. This is something we've identified. It's not fair that some schools continuously have substitutes and other schools don't, just for the location of their school or the availability of getting subs for those schools. So the idea would be to go with a company like this that would 100% work on having our subs cultivated, so that we can fill the vacancies at the school and not have to burden the schools to say, "Sorry, we didn't get any subs for you today." They take up, they have a percent of, if the sub costs a dollar, they charge 29% on top of that. And in return, then we're not managing, we're not paying for the annual software subscription. We're not having people in HR constantly man the sub line. We're having high expectations that our Title I schools need to have the same number of substitute teachers as our other schools. They do incentive programs with their subs that we can't do. When they talk about incentive programs, they incentivize, they have gift cards for their subs. They have special incentives that go on with their substitute teachers. When you look at their number of teachers that they have who continue with their programs at other districts, it's very high. They have a very low turnover rate. When we ask them, "How many subs do they have?", in many cases, they have well exceeded the number of substitute teachers that they have in their database when they take over this project. So we think it's a good thing for our schools. We think it's something that we've talked about for a while, and we think the critical area are Title I schools. I mean, that's who we really are targeting to ensure that our substitutes are, we have ample substitutes, and we can fill up those vacancies at the schools.
Okay, I've just got a couple nuts and bolts questions for you, and so I appreciate that, Doug. The big question, of course, was, "Does this mean my subpay is going down?"
It is not going down. Nope, the subpay is not going down. I have the chart here.
Madam Chair, can I offer a couple of comments while he's looking for that?
Sure.
I don't know if the board remembers, but for a number of years, we've tried a variety of things to improve our fill rate for substitutes. Number one, we came back to the board and increased the subpay, because we had felt that we were not competitive with our neighboring counties, so we did increase that. We saw a little bit of an improvement, but not much. Our fill rate last year, prior to COVID, because you really can't count anything past that, we were about 87% was our standard. Then this past year, in addition to the added subpay, we said, "Okay, if teachers have to cover a class, we're going to also pay the teachers, so that if they are giving up their planning time", we signed an MOU that was different than what was listed in our bargaining agreement, because in the bargaining agreement originally, it states that for each unfilled sub, the school gets $50, and then a committee decides how to divide that money at the end of the year. So we thought, "Okay, we'll pay the teachers directly. That may help." Well, after a while, we still got complaints because it was just too much. They were having to, then, yeah, we paid them, but they were giving up their time, and they really needed their planning time. So once we saw that we were still having difficulty, I had asked Mr. Wagner and the HR team, I said, "Here's a couple of vendors. I think we've got to explore it, because we're still not making any headway." So we did know that a number of districts tried this company. Their success rate was far better than ours, so we said, "You know what? We're going to at least try it." It's a one-year situation. They've taken the cost factor, that if you filled every position, this is what it would equate to. It doesn't mean they get all that money, or they get it upfront. They only get paid what they're able to fill, but we're hoping the net result is that we are able to fill our classrooms. If they are vacant, we do not want the students to be divvied up or as inconvenient as much as possible. So we're hoping that this, with other measures, remember, we did add some classroom sub, expanded that, and you'll see some of that presentation when Mr. Barjaron does our allocation presentation to you. We did increase some paras to help cover still, because you will still have some that, at the last minute, call in or need a doctor's appointment, so you're still going to have to have some intermittent. So we've tried a couple of things. Add a few more classroom subs in the mix, and then maybe if we do this, our unfilled rate will be higher than what we've experienced in the past few years. And again, this won't be one of the things that HR is tasked with doing. A company's sole responsibility is that. So I just wanted to give a little bit of background as to the why. So Mr. Wagner has the other information.
I have it, so I found it, because I didn't have them all memorized. So the pay rate is the same that we currently have right now, so I'll go through that. So the substitute teacher with their plus 60 hours, it's $89 a day, and that's our current rate that we have. And so their bill rate is $116. The substitute teacher with a bachelor degree is $100 a day, so their bill rate is $130. The substitute teacher in Title I is $110 a day. The long-term sub, over 20 days, is $120. The long-term sub teacher over 90 days is $150. The substitute paraprofessional with a college credit is $10 an hour. And so the current pay rate is set by the school board. So that's not changing for the, we'll call them our employees, but now they would be moved over to the ESS employees. The teachers still have preference on where they want to work. So no one's saying, when you sign up for this program, all of a sudden, the teachers, the substitute teachers are said, "You now have to go here to this school, or you have to go to this school," or so on. So the teachers can still have preferred sub schools that they want to work at. It might be the school that they live nearby. The district maintains control of the program. Whatever the rate is now will continue. Might be something we want to address in the future when you start talking about raising rates for substitute teachers. They have the opportunity to participate in their benefit program. They get paid weekly, which isn't the case now. So I don't know, does that answer your question about the rates? I think the concern.
Yeah, yeah, it does. I appreciate that very much. Is there anything that our substitutes need to do? Because obviously, they were going through our internal substitute teacher database. Do they have to do anything with the new company, or we migrate everyone over for them?
They do not. So if this passes, we would migrate over our full database. They would get information from this company, saying, "This is the new program. This is the benefits. This is how it's going to work. This is the process." And they really work hard to show that they can recruit more substitute teachers in the districts that they're in. So we think it's a win-win. Like the superintendent said, we've been trying this for many, many years in Manatee County.
And we, as a board, have been tinkering with it from, so that Superintendent Saunders, I appreciate, that was a good reminder of how we have ended up at this point, so. I appreciate that, and I apologize for hitting you with this late afternoon instead of doing it before today, but the questions kind of came to me in the afternoon.
Absolutely. We want people to feel, we want people to feel comfortable about the program.
Likewise, yeah. Okay, thanks.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Dr. Hopes had some comments to add. Dr. Hopes?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yes, thank you. I think this is a novel approach. I'm a little bit concerned, because when I discussed this with the superintendent, my understanding was that this was a program to kind of fill our hard-to-fill substitute positions, and that this company would only get paid for the subs that they place.
Correct.
But now I'm hearing that we're rolling over our entire substitute program, except those permanent subs that we have to the company at basically a 30% premium. So here's my main concern. We did this in healthcare a number of years ago with nurses. And what we created in doing this was just what this is going to create. It's going to create a competing force, which requires us to pay an additional premium to hire the same people we would have been hiring before. I think we do need to solve the problem, but I want to ensure that this is a term-limited contract, because I will tell you what we learned in healthcare is we ended up handing over a premium opportunity to the private sector to place nurses. And they became traveling nurses, and they got all these additional benefits. They got gift cards. And they got all these things that we probably could have provided them in the first place. And so what was originally discussed in the brief discussion I had was these hard-to-place subs in our Title I schools. But now I'm here, and we're going to roll everything, including our database, and everything over to a company to manage it. And I just want to ensure that we don't create a situation where we're pricing ourselves out of competing. Because I have to wonder if we, and one of the things I discussed with the superintendent, was we have a pretty good database on what our substitute demand is. And if the solution is creating more permanent subs, including subs that are full-time, that float from school to school, and we pay benefits, which is 30% or whatever, that that could solve part of the problem. So I just want to make sure that while we're testing this program, we don't create the environment so that it's very difficult for us to go back if it doesn't work. If this 30% premium is going to the administrators and not to, you know, our local workforce. Because what happened in healthcare is we created our own problem by doing this to solve a short-term problem. We created a long-term problem. And we found the nursing workforce going to work for these companies, so that they could move from hospital to hospital and. And it ended up costing the healthcare system a lot of money. So I just want to make sure that we're targeting our hard-to-fill subpositions, but we're not putting our hands up and saying, we're not gonna try any other solutions. Because we have not tried what it would be if we did a thirty percent increase in what we paid people to substitute in our classrooms. But that's what we're doing and handing this over. So just a word of caution that, you know, we should also look at other creative ways like having more permanent subs and giving them benefits, which it sounds like what this company is gonna do. So I just want to make sure that at the end of the year, we can reassess the program and we can cancel it and we don't have substitutes that have non-compete clauses so that they can't come back and substitute on a per diem with us. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does anybody want to respond to those questions?
Okay, so a couple of things. So our agreement starts July 1, 2020, and it goes for three years. So it's a three-year agreement.
So it's not a one-year?
It's not. It can be, it shall remain in effect through June 30, 2023. And then after that, it will renew on a yearly basis unless either party provides written notice of termination sixty days prior to the end of the fiscal school year. You know, if a company is gonna come in here and advertise and send in their own team to do all the management, you know, I wouldn't expect them either to say, you know, we could be canceled at any time. Now, it can, after the first three years, it can be, you know, it's for three years, but it can be canceled.
Madam Chair, that's a different story than I was under the impression. I heard the deputy superintendent say that we're gonna try this for a year. But now it sounds like, you know, in all fairness, I didn't dive into it. I kind of, you know, took it face value that we were filling hard-to-fill positions. But we're basically contracting our out, our entire substitute system for three years. And I want to look and see what the exit, you know, what our out clauses are. If this doesn't work, it sounds like we're not gonna have an opportunity to try other alternatives like increasing our full-time subs.
There are out clauses in the agreement. We could go through it to talk about those. Let me find the page on it.
Start with, I guess, the performance requirement.
I have three other people waiting to speak.
That's fine. You can move on. Go to the other members.
Yeah, well, is it possible that I have them speak and then you can answer some of these questions about the contract?
Okay, let's do that.
Reverend Golden?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Apparently this started out as a consent agenda item pulled by one of our colleagues to answer some questions about the existing pool. But since it's now before us, it was not to exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars per fiscal year. With the twenty-nine percent stated premium that it costs to exercise this, the direct costs that are available is one million nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars. And so the question I would like to have answered is whether or not last year's substitute teaching direct and indirect costs exceeded one million nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand nine hundred and eighty-five dollars.
So to answer that question, that was the number that we used to come up with the estimate. We don't know how many subs we're gonna need from a year-to-year basis. So we just had to use the snapshot.
The question I'm asking is, what did we spend for substitute teachers last year? Does anybody know that?
We do. It's the amount that we put on the boardwork for the cost of this project.
And does that include what we paid teachers who are filling in?
That includes the cost of the software. That included the cost of the staff and HR that oversee the subs. That included the cost of the teachers who were filling in. It really is just a, it's just a snapshot to try to say, that's what we think we're gonna have. Maybe we'll have less people take off this year.
I can, I can.
With COVID-19.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to respond to some of these questions?
Yes, the substitute cost for this past year prior to COVID was one million five hundred nine thousand hundred and four dollars ninety-seven cents. If we wanted to get to a ninety-three percent fill rate, it would be two-point-one million dollars.
Under the current system that?
Under the current system that we have to date.
And that's without a premium?
Correct.
So our direct and indirect costs, two-point-one million extrapolated for the year. And if we were trying to compare apples to apples, oranges to oranges, however that thing goes, we would take two-point-one million dollars, if I can just get this contraption to work.
Minus the two-point-five and?
No, because of two-point-five.
Because that's their administrative cost that, and so forth, they're making to get to there.
So yours, two-point-one million dollars times one-point-two-nine.
Two-nine, correct.
Beg your pardon?
Correct.
Yeah, two, one-point-two-nine equals two-point-seven-oh-nine, two million seven hundred and nine thousand dollars. If we stayed with what we got and if we had to add a thirty percent, twenty-nine percent markup to be competitive, if we were gonna do something with, provide them with more benefits, blah, 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 blah. So that's two-point-seven, two million seven hundred and nine thousand dollars as compared to something that will not exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars. Is that?
Correct.
Did I do the math right? I don't want to do all of the.
In addition, we have a thirty-day right to terminate clause for convenience in every one of our contracts. Even though it's a three-year agreement, if at any time we did not feel that they were sufficient in supplying the subs and we didn't see that it was an improvement, we have a thirty-day right to cancel clause.
I just want to know, did I do the mathematics right? Because see, we could have all these opinions about whether this is a good thing or not, but dollars to dollars. I'm sorry. I'll wait till they finish. No, that's all right. Go ahead. Finish.
It's in the rider.
It's in the rider. What's happened is that this is a participating agreement with another county. So what we had to do in order to protect ourselves is that we had to go ahead and we did a rider to this particular agreement. Superintendent's a hundred percent correct. If and any at all times, the district must be protected in several ways. One, confidentiality of our students. Governing law must be Florida. We must ensure that we're indemnified as well. And in addition, some of the clauses which we always have in our contracts are the termination for cause, which would give the right to remedy, and termination for convenience as well. That's all part of the rider signed off by the vendor man.
Is there any cost to the termination for convenience?
No, 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 Dr. Hope's. It's standard language. But those are great questions and I had to pull it up and literally, it's like I show our board members.
So anytime we can terminate within thirty days without cause and it costs us nothing?
No, our rider allows us, the main contract itself that was Duval's, Duval's contract was different. This is thirty days. Our riders, my rider that I signed off on said thirty.
Without cause at no cost to the district?
It's at no cost. And also, other issues are guaranteed minimums. Obviously, for Dr. Hope's, if I may speak on this. It's hard to set up a company that you're gonna say to yourself, I'd like you to go ahead and provide a staffing, yet we keep a pool for ourselves. Because they're not gonna want to come in here for the surplus. They want to come in here for everything. So ultimately, if we can get to a hundred percent, it, we are, we are ahead of the game because as it's already been stated, one, we're not paying the cost to manage the program. The administrative portions of it, yes, there's a different cost involved. But if we get us from where we are, say, if it's fifty or sixty to a hundred, the win is there.
I did have one last question.
Yes, I'm sorry. He, I think we were waiting for him to get his questions answered and I moved on to you. So I want to make sure everyone gets their questions answered, Reverend Golden, and then I'm gonna move on to Mr. Minor next.
Okay, the only other question I had is whether or not the liability with respect to these people that are, I guess they would be independent contractors, is, does liability flow through them to the district since we're using them or does it start, are they required to?
The company has their own liability. They have their own insurance. They have to have certain limits in the contract. And they're very high.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. What I think that we're being asked to do is to substitute a potential two-point-seven million dollar problem with a two-point-five million dollar problem that we can change our minds about within thirty days. Okay, that's good. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you for your summation. Mr. Minor?
I thank for hearing some great questions and some good answers. I have no further questions to ask.
Okay, I agree with you. There's been a lot of really good, thought-promoting conversations. So thanks for doing that. I, when I read everything and I spoke to the superintendent, she kind of enlightened me about her, why she was doing this. And for me, it comes down to supporting our teachers. This supports our teachers more. And I think in this coming year, man oh man, are we gonna need to support our teachers every way possible. And this, to me, supports our teachers and therefore it's gonna support our students because we're gonna have more teachers, more substitutes available for our teachers if they were to get ill or if something were to happen, we will have this available. And I think that that's very important right now and I think that better supports our students' learning because we do not know what next year's going to hold. So to me, there's a lot of value to this, if nothing else. And I really appreciate Reverend Golden's math on that because it really brings it into a perspective that I didn't even consider. Because to me, even if it was at a cost, I thought it was a worthy cost. But to even consider that, yes, the fill rate will hopefully be higher is, I like that. So we've all had one go around. Mr. Kennedy, you were signed up to speak again?
Yeah, I was gonna say, as Mr. Minor said, this has been addressed, but I just wanted to say I certainly would support it for a year. Let's just try it out and see how it goes. And if it's not working, we just terminate. So I appreciate the background info.
And Madam Chair, and something, so we all feel comfortable about it too. I mean, we surely can come back and have a snapshot of where we are mid-year. The district is indemnified in the contract, so we don't have the liability with it. We can show how they've done the first six months. Obviously, they want to make it work here as well. And then that way, we can have a progress reports as we go on. I mean, we want this to work, just like what you said. We want the classrooms filled.
Hey, hearing no other discussion? Oh, wait, now I have somebody else that just signed up. Reverend Golden?
Oh, I'm sorry. I want to call the question. I don't have to do that.
I don't think you have to.
I don't have to do that?
I think we're going there.
Okay, okay.
I don't hear any other discussions, so I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye and hit your green button.
Aye.
And hit the green button. I see a second.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna move forward to new business. This was an item, this item was originally on the May 12 board meeting. And during the approval of the agenda, Board Member Minor called for tabling of this item and setting it forth for a new action under new business on an agenda for a board meeting held in the last half of June, which is surprise today. And this item does need to be taken off the table. So I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to remove this item from the table.
Okay, got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, so we've got a motion and a second to remove this item from the table. Is there any discussion about removing this from the table? Okay, hearing none, we will vote. All those in favor of removing this from the table, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. It passes four to one with Gina Messenger dissenting. Then we will move forward. Now I'm looking for a motion. A motion for approval of requesting purchase draft of an RFP for legal services. It is outlined in our boardwork. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second? Okay, hearing none. It dies for lack of a second. We will move on. We have, we've received several public comments over the past few days. The record here says we have about fourteen. Those will be included in our minutes in our agenda packet. Let's move forward to workshop item requests. Do we have any workshop item requests? Well, good, because we have lots of workshops coming up. Let's move forward with updates then. Legal Department update. Nothing. All right. Instructional update. Is Ms. Yost with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Yost, can you give us an instructional update?
I would be pleased and honored. Thank you so much. Good evening to all of you. I'll begin with an update on our extended school year. We have a camp running for exceptional students at this time. We have seventy-six students participating in the program at this time. They are participating virtually. Their teachers are working with them daily, four days a week, as well as they are receiving related services that are outlined in their individual education plans. We also have a third-grade reading camp underway. And at this time, we've been averaging three hundred students weekly, which is outstanding. And we are conducting post-tests at this time, so camp will conclude this Thursday. And we hope to have pass rates to share next week. So we're wishing those students well. I know our teachers worked in small groups with our students virtually and provided as many individualized programs as possible to support the reading initiative. Additionally, we are working on camp care. The governor has allocated relief funds that will be dedicated to a camp in Manatee County. We are going to be serving all of our Title I, elementary Title I schools. Each school will receive six teachers to address students who are rising third, fourth, and fifth graders. We will focus on reading and math during a six-hour day. Students will report from eight AM to two-fifteen daily. They will begin the program on July 8th and conclude on July 29th. Teachers will work a half-day at the start and the end of the school day. We have three schools that will be gathering at another site other than their own because of construction challenges. But all fifteen schools will have an opportunity to provide instruction that will hopefully close the gap for many of our students who were out of school, as we all know, for the fourth quarter. And this summer instruction, we hope to enhance and enable our students to be closer to on-target and excelling as we open our doors in August. Finally, we're working on a summer leadership academy, both for administrators as well as for teachers. Both groups will be meeting for two days virtually and obtaining the same content. We will be focusing on SchoolAgi 101, curriculum maps, and our school and sequence, best standards, as well as implicit bias training. The session for administrators will be conducted July 20th and 21st, followed by the 22nd and 23rd for our teachers. So we've been extremely busy focusing on instruction, students, and staff development. And we look forward to our teachers returning August 3rd at the conclusion of camp care. Thank you.
Thank you. It looks like Reverend Golden, do you have a question?
Yes, Madam Deputy Superintendent?
Yes, sir.
This summer camp, the reading summer camp that we have for about the three hundred kids, is that for children going into the third grade or children who've completed the third grade?
That is for students who have completed third grade and will be rising to fourth grade. We certainly hope with the instruction offered this summer and passing. We certainly hope with the instruction offered this summer and passing the assessment, moving on to fourth grade in 2020, 21.
Okay, so they are, they are not students who are deficient in their reading?
They are lacking in their, uh, reading abilities, and that's why the camp is being offered for four weeks, four, four days per week to hopefully shore up that instruction, that reading instruction. Yes, sir, there is a focus for the entire duration of camp on reading achievement.
Okay, then what are we doing before they get to the third grade to try to assure that when they complete the third grade, this camp would not be necessary?
That would be ideal, sir. We do provide intervention along the way. We have tiered support. You have your core curriculum, and then you have tier two and tier three, which is more specialized for our students along the way. Many of our students move in and out of tier two and three and back into the core curriculum based on ongoing assessment and small group instruction. And you are absolutely correct. I hope there will become a day when all of our students are proficient at every grade level, especially in reading, so that we will move smoothly with seamlessly from grade three into grade four where this assessment is critical to promotion, according to the state of Florida. We are, um, extremely concerned this year because of the fourth quarter virtual instruction. And so these small groups of students working with, with teachers at this time, we believe it, um, should be extremely beneficial for advancement of our third graders that are rising and we hope to be rising into fourth grade.
Okay, my last question then is, with respect to this program alone, can you share the cost of that summer enrichment program for reading between the third and the fourth grade?
I apologize, sir. I do not have those figures with me, but I will certainly secure the information and share it with you, um, in the next 24 hours.
And it is a cost that presently is being borne by grant from the governor? Is that what this is?
No, the grant from the governor is funding the camp care, which will address rising third, fourth, and fifth grade students at our 15 Title I schools. There will be the potential for 1,080 students to really see that instruction. This is required instruction. Um, the, um, comprehensive reading grant funds most of the, um, expense for the third grade reading camp. Our teachers are paid. Transportation is, is usually provided, but it's virtual this year. So I will certainly acquire those expenses for you, but it's two separate camps. One is strictly for third grade reading, those students struggling to reach fourth grade. The other will be to shore up and close achievement gaps for rising third, fourth, and fifth graders within our Title I schools.
So is it fair to say that as we sit here today, we do not have an ongoing, um, effort starting at pre-kindergarten or starting at kindergarten to assist our students beyond what we, I'll just say ordinarily do to get to the third grade reading level? And the only thing that we have specifically directed toward that is after they finish third grade, if they've not attained that level, we have this last ditch effort of a summer camp to try to help them get to the fourth grade.
That is a required state, um, that is a state requirement. Um, however, I do not think that we are, um, missing students and, um, not providing intervention as we should along the way from pre-K forward. We work with tiered support. We have extended day programs. We have, um, Club Excel for our ELL, student speaking second languages. We have exceptional student education. We have team meetings that focus on students and their progress, primarily in reading and math. But there are many supports that are built in beginning in pre-kindergarten through third grade. It is at third grade that we are required to provide the summer camp. But we have many camps that run, for example, Camp Rise, Camp Shine with Title I, have been ongoing in this district for many summers. And they focus on reading enhancement. And it was not strictly for students who were struggling, um, in academics. But it was there to enable them to continue learning throughout the summer months to avoid the summer slide.
All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, I, I can't answer a few of those questions, Reverend, only because I, I worked on the budget for our summer school. And it is a little unusual this year because, uh, we were not providing transportation and it was not as expansive as it normally is. Uh, it was a little unusual. Our summer program for third grade this year ran approximately $300,000. But I will tell you, our district has done a yeoman's job in improving our grade level reading campaign specifically for third graders. Uh, the unfortunate thing that we encountered this year with COVID is that we were not able to formally assess them by the state because with the, uh, addition and expansion of pre-K over the last few years, we now have 100 pre-classrooms in our traditional schools, 100 classrooms. Uh, most of which we're picking up through supplemental, uh, extra funding sources because we know our funding is K-12. It's not pre-K. So we are choosing to make a commitment there, and we have done that for the last five years. This year, uh, our data showed for third grade, we had approximately 407 third graders that were not going to be promoted or promoted for cause. Last year was 824. The year before that, it was 1,200. So you will see over time, we have whittled down that retention and we've been improving literacy. But it's a whole community effort that's been going on, uh, from a commitment that really started five years ago. With the commitment starting with making sure we were funding literacy, beginning with pre-K and partnering with our community to make sure that we helped with this initiative because it's far bigger than anything we can do just within our school district. Uh, the Early Learning Coalition works hand in hand with us in providing uniform strategy and instruction. And Dr. Robin Thompson and her division partners directly with them so that no matter if you're in a private pre-K or our pre-K, we're working together so that they're entering kindergarten a little bit more prepared. That's really making a difference. Working and partnering with the United Way and our Early Learning Coalition with the Patterson Foundation has expanded not only the awareness, but all the, also the support for this initiative. And I can't even begin to tell you how grateful we are for the community partners like, uh, John and Amanda Horn with a dive into reading initiatives that they, that they provide for us and our students in the summer. Partnering with them, uh, Books for Kids. We have a number of partners that really have gone the extra mile to make sure that we're making a difference. I truly do believe you are going to see a major improvement for our third grade reading proficiency levels specifically in our Title I schools this year. Unfortunately, we have a little bit of a, you know, hiccup. There could be, you know, we're going to have to make up some ground. And by doing so, uh, the governor, as well as the Commissioner of Education, just released last week some funding. And, and I have to commend our department, Ms. Yost and her division, within a moment's notice has, have come together so that we can provide an additional summer school for rising third, fourth, and fifth graders in our Title I schools. So about 12 of them are going to participate for three weeks to try to bridge that gap and fill in the void, give them a jump start before we bring them back in the fall. And without the commitment of those schools and those principals, those teachers that are willing to come in, it just shows the commitment that we have in Manatee County. So there are a lot of initiatives, curriculum, training, going back to the basics of ensuring our teachers know how to teach literacy, foundational literacy from kindergarten on through, because we know if they don't have those basic skills, we really do struggle from third grade moving forward. Uh, we've also started a number of other initiatives, expanding magnet programs and our dual language program to fill in those gaps where we know that we've been struggling. So, uh, I, I think we've made the stride. Uh, unfortunately, we don't have the official documentation that supports it, but we do have the preliminary data that does. And I think what it shows is that we have to have that commitment. And I know that was one of your initiatives, to continue funding literacy and making sure that we're putting that in, in those schools, uh, in those communities that need it the most. So I, I think we are on the right track. We just need to expand and continue what we're doing.
Madam Superintendent, thank you so very much for that very detailed explanation, specifically and particularly. I, I've heard anecdotally that the first few years you learn to read so that for the rest of your educational career, you can read to learn. And, uh, I guess what I would particularly be interested in, in, in having a discussion about is where could we best use about $2,000 a month to add to the efforts that we are already making in an ongoing way in these early childhood years? And I, I raise that because I, I think that they are, there is some interest in, uh, providing at least that level of support to early childhood education. But I don't know enough about where it could best be used. So if you could...
We can certainly pull a, a group together to help you spend that money. We have no problem with that.
All right. That, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Yost. Thank you.
Operations update.
Very good. I just have three items tonight. Uh, the first one is, when you came in tonight, you will have noticed a different, uh, a new system for scanning temperatures. So we're product testing some of our devices here and at the PSC and the schools shortly, uh, besides the handheld, because we know that that's something that, uh, will continue, I'm sure, in the fall. So...
I don't like it.
You don't?
No, I don't. When I walked in, it looked at me and said, "You're normal." I didn't, I didn't like that at all.
It does. It says normal. That's exactly what it is.
I didn't like that at all. I, I don't know what that meant.
It means your temperature is below 100.4. So yes, you are normal. So, uh, the schools are working hard also identifying what's needed, uh, for their students. So a shout out to all the schools and the, the staff that's helping with that, purchasing department, finance department. Everyone's working hard to ensure masks, shields, dividers, uh, thermometer, temperature processes. It really is a busy time right now, and everyone's chipping in to ensure that we're ready to go in the fall. And number three, register to ride. When we first started this project, uh, just a few weeks ago, we had, it was a new idea. Never in Manatee County have we ever registered to ride the school bus before school started. That wasn't something we've done. So, uh, just to give you a success, uh, we had almost 14,000 students in February ride our school buses. And today, we're pushing 10,000 students have registered to ride in just three weeks. So the campaign truly is working. The schools are working hard to get that information out. The bus transportation is working hard to push that out. It's on our website, manateeschools.net. It's also, you can call the number 7821BUS and register on pho, on the phone as well. So that's a big deal. We're just a few thousand short from hitting our goal of having everyone register to ride and still, you know, just, uh, June. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Superintendent remarks?
Yes, uh, one of the things I wanted to discuss tonight, uh, is preparation for our workshop on Thursday. Uh, I think that's going to be very, uh, important conversation because we really are going to have an open dialogue about what we foresee the fall to be looking like based on what we know today. I just wanted you to be aware of all the information, uh, that's been gathered, uh, that was comprised of what my presentation will be and some of the recommendations will be. As you can see, some of the comments that have come in today, I'd say they're split 50/50. As many that I get with one position, I get just as many with a different position. So, uh, what I would say is, we are going to do the very best with all the information gathered. Uh, we have been, uh, working with community groups. We have sought advice and input from our Strategic Planning Task Force, our Diversity and Inclusion Committee, our Pastor Community Group, the survey results, school administrator groups, small principal meetings, individual principal meetings, union representation, uh, board members' conversations, uh, the FADS organization, as well as cabinet meetings. So we have compiled a lot of input. I will tell you, to date, our survey had over 21,000 responses and 29,000 comments on top of the other. So it has not been taken lightly. And I do think that if we are not going to look at the input, we shouldn't have sought it. So from all that's gathered, we are going to try collectively to come up with the very best decisions possible, even though it's not going to please 100% of the people. Uh, our general plan on Thursday is, uh, our meeting at 10 o'clock. I will kind of go through a PowerPoint, giving you some detailed information and some recommendations based on all the input. And then from 11 to 1, if anyone still wants to provide comments, we've got sites available where they can actually go and make comments, as well as they can continue to email board members. And, uh, the locations are Bay Shore High School, Lakewood Ranch High School, Palmetto High School, Southeast High School, and the SSC. So we are allowing the community to really have a say as to what they think is needed for their child, uh, for the fall school year. So, um, again, if you do not want to come in, you still have an opportunity, even though the survey is closed, to provide input. Uh, we received some today. Comments are still coming in to Ms. Boyce that are really about Thursday that came in for your input. And I do want the community to know that we really are taking what they're saying seriously. And, and I will, the great thing is, I get to give you a presentation and thoughts and recommendations, and you get to decide. I really like that part. Uh, in addition, I do want parents to know we are scheduled for graduation at the end of the month. End of July, not June, end of July. Uh, we have made some slight changes due to the CDC guidelines. Uh, instead of using, uh, the convention center, uh, we have now booked and scheduled with LeCom. Why? Again, due to input and recommendations, we are able to do more social distancing. Uh, they have, uh, seats that are numbered, so we can easily give tickets out to parents where they can cluster families together, where you don't have to have social distancing because your family is clustered together. It still has covered area, so you're not all out in the sun. We're going to work out the protocols of how we bring in the graduates. But, uh, based on feedback I've received from, I forgot to even mention that one, from our, um, Healthy Team Coalition, uh, and I can't forget, forget them because that conversation was a good maybe hour and a half. It could have went on for another hour, uh, from their perspective. But based on what they said in terms of going back to school, but also their input in graduation, we've reached out to the, uh, high school principals, got their input. And, uh, they are now communicating with all of their students and faculty. But it is still, it is still scheduled. We've made some slight adjustments. And the schools will be reaching out to the graduates, uh, individually to give them all the details, I'm sure, right after the Fourth of July week. But unless something changes, you know, we're, we're in that kind of fluctuating world, uh, I did want the parents to know that we are slated to have graduation. want the parents to know that we are slated to have graduation as anticipated end of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Minor, you want to start us off with board comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. At our last meeting, we had discussions about a statement as to how this district, we, you know, wanted to take a public stance regarding injustices and racism in the community and the country. This is in line with a tradition that has been, you know, with our country from its inception, to, you know, have a position to guide and help us be as a community and a country moving forward. I think the preamble to our constitution was an example of that. I think it was Governor Morris, you know, from Pennsylvania, who set forth these statements. We, who wrote them, but they were adopted by the Constitution, by the Constitution Convention. And instead, in there, it was said in there, "We, the people of the United States, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, and provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, do ordain and establish this constitution of the United States of America." That set the tone of what, as a country, we should be, what we would aspire to. And that became a tradition for Abraham Lincoln. And I think all of us here are familiar with his Gettysburg Address, setting forth a moral statement of saying, it begins with, "Four score and seven years ago, our fathers brought forth on this continent a new nation conceived in liberty and dedicated to the proposition that all men are created equal." That was the moral tone that President Lincoln, you know, said we should follow, and we did to some extent, but not fully. I think that probably in the last century, the most eloquent speaker of moral tone, you know, for our country was Dr. Martin Luther King. And in writings and in speeches, he at least set forth a path that we should follow. And I think that in his letters from the Birmingham jail, he talked about injustice, that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. Those are, you know, words that I think that we all should remember, and I think has been a conscience, you know, for our community to follow. Of course, in his "I Have a Dream" speech at the gathering in Washington, of all working together and children walking together, set a moral tone that we should follow. Now, what we have in our statement, I think that says, "The school district of Manatee County stands in solidarity with all those who oppose racism and racial injustice. We grieve with our students, families, and communities over the brutal and needless deaths of Black Americans that have sparked protests of anger, frustration, and despair across America and the world. And we, as board members, have much to do with equality, the decency of this community. We direct how over $800 million is spent in our budget to help educate and provide better lives, you know, for our students and make this community a better place." Some of that money is directed to our Manatee Technical College, which has earned a reputation across the country for helping develop students, helping to develop this community. Part of that is our Justice, our police training academy. We have in this law enforcement academy, and we've had over the last 10 years, over 451 officers trained. One of the requirements to be in that training is to, before you graduate or before you take classes, to take a polygraph to determine the suitability, the honesty of students. Approximately 25% of the students are minorities. This has been an opportunity, you know, for law enforcement, not only in our community, to have quality officers, you know, to have good training, but many other counties who recognize the effectiveness of our program. We, as a board, can take pride in Manatee Technical College and the law enforcement program that we have. I am, to digress, implying that I think it would be worthy, you know, of this board to have a workshop, you know, to fully understand the extent that we, you know, through our money and our organization, help to promote, you know, better practices, which is essential for good law enforcement. I don't think there are many people who have viewed the tragedies that have occurred by, you know, good people, you know, being killed, you know, which are just totally unjustified. When I viewed it, I said, "Where was the training? Where was, you know, the qualifying of officers, you know, to be in those positions?" Training, practice, to do the right thing under strange circumstances is essential for good law enforcement. And we, you know, through our law enforcement academy, instill that, and we will continue to practice that and appreciate the importance of that and emphasize that, you know, for law enforcement officers graduating. I'm proud to say that I think in the last eight years, maybe longer before that, I've never missed a graduation ceremony and been there with pride to find people that have graduated from our, you know, police academy. I think that what we can do as a board to, you know, understand what's going on, to maybe find out ways we can, you know, further help it and to, you know, besides lauding it, to help them understand we fully, you know, support training. And I think, I'll leave this, my comments tonight with these words. I think that a lot of the problems that we have is maybe we haven't, you know, throughout the country, provided the training and the support and the recruitment of quality, you know, law enforcement officers that are necessary for dealing with the complexity of situations that arise in the communities across the country. And I digress in saying, I oppose reducing, you know, money for law enforcement. It's just how it's used and the training that's necessary for good law enforcement. And I think, you know, as a board and as a community, we're in the right direction, and I hope we will continue, you know, further in that direction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
All right, Dr. Hopez.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to, you know, remind our parents to practice the public health guidelines that have been presented and protect yourself and protect your children and prepare them this summer for whatever guidelines we are required to follow in the fall. Now's the time to spend the time with your children to ensure that they're maintaining their distance from people that are not in the family, that they protect themselves with masks or whatever is required in the environment that they're in. And just like you're trying to prepare your kindergartner to start school in the fall for the first time, you need to prepare your children, who are our students, for whatever the fall may bring with regards to the public health guidelines for this pandemic. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Reverend Golden.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, let me thank the superintendent again for that excellent briefing that we received relative to the status of reading amongst our children here in Manatee County. I will be as succinct as I possibly can be, given the length and breadth and scope of the comments made by my colleague, Attorney Minor, who is no small force on this board. He earned his nickname justifiably. He's a watchdog. I don't care what anybody else may say. I think he is seriously and sincerely committed to giving his best and doing his best for this board. However, having said that, I think I would be remiss if I did not share with the community, as a member of this school board, committed to improving education, that the preamble to the constitution that Attorney Minor referred to did not include Black people under its perumbra. Indeed, that constitution that provided for "we, the people" only allowed for Black people to be counted as three-fifths of a person and chattel at that. He further went on to recite a passage from one of the most famous speeches ever given by President Abraham Lincoln. And I would like to point out that when Abraham Lincoln gave that speech after the Battle of Gettysburg, he sought to, by another speech, to free Black people from slavery in this country. And indeed, we just celebrated this last weekend that it took two years plus for that word to move from Washington, D.C. to Galveston, Texas. And we have embraced that as what we call Juneteenth. That's part of our history, our national history. So that's part of the education that is missing with respect to the children in this community and all over this country. In fact, this country is led by a president who has confessed that he had never heard of Juneteenth. I say that because the last person that Attorney Minor referred to was Dr. Martin Luther King, and he referred to the letters that were written from the Birmingham jail. The reason Martin Luther King was in the Birmingham jail was because four little girls had been blown apart and killed simply because they were Black, and they were at Sunday School at the 16th Street Baptist Church in Birmingham, Alabama. Now, that's not Black history. That's the history of this country. And so as we move forward with all of our additional speechifying and all of the additional words that we want to bring to bear on this moment, I would simply remind you that in our last meeting, we couldn't even get a majority vote to simply change the curriculum at this lauded academy to provide some semblance of a consideration for changing the way law enforcement is taken out in this, in this community and in this country at large. So I'm hopeful that as we continue to move forward as a board, that we will take seriously our commitment to do something, to do something that makes a difference for everybody. Because if all of us are not free, none of us are free. And Dr. Martin Luther King said that too. And so what I'm, what I am energized by is the fact that we are even having this discussion for far, far too long. We have had school boards and school board members who would not lead, who would not provide direction, and who would not even try to do something to focus attention on the absence of equity, the absence of equality, the systemic racism that exists in this country. It is real. And no amount of writing is going to change that. You cannot legislate feelings. You cannot legislate emotions, but you can legislate acts. You can say, if you don't have your body camera on and you have force, you don't have a job anymore. You put on your badge, you put on your gun, turn on the body camera. You can say, and does anybody know whether the county commission in fact said, "Everybody in public in Manatee County must wear a mask"?
They did not.
Okay, it didn't pass. Again, and so we go round and round, and now we wonder, well, I wonder if there's going to be a spike. Yeah, there will be. But we've got to start doing things that we know are right, good. Can't just keep talking about it. There's just so much more. The curriculum needs to be changed in this government class in this county. And if we won't change the curriculum, at least we ought to go on record as saying it should be changed. All that takes is one more vote than we got the last time that we brought it up, and has to be brought up by one of the three people that voted against it. See, that's a rule. So one of the three people has to change their mind. Otherwise, it won't come back, won't be brought up. And I don't care how much we write down and what we say, nothing will change in that regard. And so I'm just glad that I'm a part of the body at this time, to where we can have three, two votes, where we can do something that might make a difference if nothing more than wake up the conscience of the community that we serve. And so, Madam Chair, I thank you for the opportunity to make comments, but we just can't continue to abide with sanitized versions of history. We can't talk about the Declaration of Independence without talking about Denmark V C, who gave his life in a slave rebellion in Virginia. You just can't keep, you can't talk about Abraham Lincoln and the Gettysburg Address without remembering that right after him came Andrew Johnson and the slave laws and the blue laws. You can't do that. You can't overlook Plessy v. Ferguson, that kept me from being able to even be on this board, that kept this school system segregated until Claude Kirk himself came here to try to perpetuate that. You can't forget that. That's part of the history here. And you can't keep talking about the Martin Luther King "I have a dream" speech, when even to this day, we are still in a community where we just act as if a police officer putting his knee on somebody's neck until they're dead doesn't create outrage. And you have a president who wants to know, "Well, why don't we have this kind of outrage about white people when they're killed?" about white people when they're killed? That's where we are. And if we serve any purpose at all, it must be to try to roll back that tide. It must be to try to overcome the systemic racism that is so pervasive that it could stare us in the face and we can't even see it, let alone acknowledge it. And if all I have left is two years on this board, I will not be quiet. I will not stay silent, not another day. With all my strength, with all my power, I will be helping this community to change for the better. I didn't come here to make noise. I came here to make a difference. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Well, Vice Chair Kennedy, good luck following that.
Yeah, wow, thanks, Reverend. You just, Reverend Golden's comments got me thinking about my U.S. history teaching days, and I think the reason I love that job so much is because by the time kids get to 11th and 12th grade, you can start actually hitting them with the truth. And it's such a great feeling to open a kid's eyes to the unsanitized version of U.S. history, because by that time, they're ready to, they're ready to hear it, they're ready to accept, well, most are. So that's, that was one of those kind of eye-opening, but you covered a lot of them right there. I'll be very brief, Madam Chair. First, I have a question. Superintendent Saunders, do we know what time of the day that the LeCom graduations will take place?
Right now, we had it all designated originally when it was at the convention center. I'm not sure if they're going to alter that slightly because of it, but we can send you what we originally had sent out when we were moving it to the end of July, because they were, you know, each in the evening, except on Saturday, we were running three. It was our traditional time. So, yes, we were starting and running each at night. Now, I do need to clarify, Manatee High School is not at LeCom. It's on Manatee High School's field. So, but all the rest of them would be there versus the convention center.
And as of now, the times we already have in our calendar for those summer graduations?
They've not been changed, so, yeah. I don't know if anything changed with the principals or anything, but they were all slated at night, except the three that are on Saturday.
Okay, great. I have a request also for Thursday, and you may already be planning to present this piece, but what I was anxious to hear on Thursday is about when we come back, what are some of our strategies for, you know, better serving our ESE students?
In my plan.
Yeah, okay, great. And then finally, and not just related to ESE, but also separately, do we have a plan? And we could talk about it Thursday. But when we come back in August for kind of identifying where kids are, you know, with the fourth quarter, that's in there too already? Okay, great, thank you.
For K to 12, across all grades.
Okay, awesome, thank you. It's already in there. And then the last thing I just want to, I want to get, I don't want to get on my soapbox, but, you know, it's really interesting to watch. We don't really have any national or state leadership right now about, you know, best practices for how we should be conducting ourselves in public and in public places amidst a pandemic. So it's kind of being thrown to individual counties and jurisdictions to just, we're on our own, and different counties are making different rules. And so, you know, kind of touching back to Reverend Golden's point, like, we can only be responsible for our domain, and I just, it's really, it's just sad to me that, like, we have become so polarized as a society that even with something as simple as wearing masks is becoming a political partisan issue. And, but I feel like from us, because, not just because this is a nonpartisan body, but because I think all five of us operate as nonpartisans, that we really have an opportunity here to take the lead on this and to show other elected officials and elected bodies that, you know, it's okay to have high standards. And so, I know we're going to talk about this on Thursday too, so I won't go into it here, but, you know, it's, you know, given what we know, and it seems like every time we meet, we know a little bit more than we did a couple of weeks before related to COVID and prevention. And, you know, I've said this to so many people in the past week, but like, you know, the prevention techniques only work, especially masks, only work, you know, we're kind of all in this together. And, you know, this is going to pass. This is a temporary, this is a temporary measure that we're going to get through, and, you know, we'll look back on and smile and laugh about, oh, that crazy 2020, what a year. But, you know, just today, I told the superintendent this earlier before the meeting started. I was getting ready for the meeting today, and I was kind of looking at, you know, different policies and what other school districts and counties are doing. And it kind of dawned on me that, you know, if we, and Superintendent's already, she'll present this on Thursday, but like, if you're wearing a mask, you don't really have to worry about six feet. So, and I'm sure you've all seen the numbers about the dramatic reduction in transmission that is achieved by mask-wearing. So, I don't really have anywhere to go with this. I just wanted to kind of share that, you know, it's just kind of a call for us to, you know, kind of call to our community to kind of unite around this issue. And just remind folks that, yeah, it's kind of a pain in the neck. You do get used to it after a little while. But it is kind of a pain in the neck, and it can be a nuisance, and there's, you know, a bunch of individual situations and so forth, but like, if we pull together and do this together, we're going to get through this with the minimal amount of people becoming ill. And especially related to us, when our employees and our students are on our campuses and in our care, you know, we really, obviously, this doesn't need to be said, but, you know, it's master of the obvious moment here, but like, they are in our, we are responsible for their health. And so, just, again, I'm kind of without a point here, other than, you know, let's not be afraid to step on people's toes because they think, like, mask-wearing, or, you know, they think this is a hoax, or they think that, you know, this, Reverend, you've said this before, people who think, you know, masks or other prevention measures are infringing on their freedoms. So, I guess it's just a call to, like, let's err on the side of caution and this protection of our employees and our kids. That was it. So, we can pick up there on Thursday. Thanks, Gina.
I liked Reverend Golden's comment of, "I didn't come here to make noise." I think that's my mentality. I like to seize as much action as possible, and I really appreciate your words. I actually find them inspirational, genuinely, I do. And I do think that the board has had action. I think that we did discuss that it doesn't necessarily need to be a curriculum change, but really something to put in the student progression plan, which the district assured would happen. And I think that is action, and I think that we need to continue to move for that, and I encourage you to continue to push. I appreciate that. I appreciate all of you up here, and mask-wearing or not, even if you're talking about wearing a mask and touching your face five more times, which is when the germs actually get on to you. I digress. We could have that whole conversation on Thursday. I was counting how many times you touched your face while you were speaking, if only to prove a point about what happens when you wear a mask. But I'm not going to talk about that at the moment, because that's a conversation for Thursday. But there is a tally chart on my paper. There is, I don't truly believe there is one right answer. I really, truly don't. But I do think that we will do whatever we can with all the feedback that we've gotten, with all the data that we have, and make the very best decision possible. And that's all I can ever ask. You know, my daughter's going to enter in our school system. I'm incredibly vested. I want her to be safe, and I want all the teachers to be safe, and so it very much matters to me. I think we just need to make sure that we do it in the best way possible, and I don't, no matter what, someone's not going to like whatever we do. And that's our jobs. So, with that, it is 7:23 p.m., and I will, if there's no objections, adjourn our meeting. Thank you.